All right. I'd like to call this meeting to order a regular meeting of the Village Board on Monday, May 17th at 7:00 PM in the Germantown Village Hall boardroom and also can be accessed via WebEx. This meeting has been given public notice in accordance with Sections 19.83 and 19.84 of the Wisconsin statutes in such form that will apprise the general public and news media of subject matter that is intended for consideration and action. Roll call shows all Village Board members present except for Trustee Peiper, who is excused. At this time, I will ask us all to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. President's report tonight, just a couple of things to report. This past Saturday, I participated in the MyFest in a Box celebration and came and picked my box that I ordered ahead of time at about 2:00. It was raining off and on every day, all day long, here and there. It was kind of cold and windy, so you definitely knew it was MyFest Day because of that, because that's usually how it falls. Whatever day they pick, it usually goes that way. But I think all in all, it was successful. I thought the items in the box were very nice, very well selected, and we enjoyed them immensely. So congratulations to the organizers of MyFest and for putting this actual event on. I think it was well attended in respect to what they sold out, and I think everybody enjoyed that a little bit different. And we'll look forward to next year when we'll actually have the celebration somewhere in Germantown. All right, that's all I have to report, so we can go to the next item on the agenda, which is appointments.
Make a motion to approve the Commission Board and Committees' Appointments 1, 2, and 3 as presented.
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve appointments as listed. Any discussion on that motion? No discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-opposed? Motion carries. Next item is announcements of forthcoming events of public interest, committee or department reports. And we'll start with committee reports and committee chairs with Trustee Miller.
General Government and Finance just met before this meeting tonight, and our next meeting will be June 21st, Monday, June 21st at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. Trustee Kaminski.
Public Works will be meeting on June 2nd, that is a Wednesday, at 6:00 PM in this room.
Thank you. Trustee Myers.
And Public Safety will be meeting in this room on June 7th at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. Does anyone else have anything else for announcements of forthcoming events of public interest, committee, or department reports they'd like to bring forward? All right, then we can go on to the next item, which is citizen input and public appearance on items not subject to a public hearing. There are no public hearings on tonight's agenda, but if there is anyone in the audience or has joined us via WebEx that would like to participate in citizen input or public appearance, all I would ask is you come forward and state your name and your address for the record. Thank you. It's the mask, you don't know.
Good evening, everyone. Approaching the end of May, Memorial Day is right around the corner. Post 1 will be the first ceremony on Sunday. Michael Squads at 9:00 AM, starting at 9:00 AM, are going to visit the six cemeteries in Germantown, along with the post chaplain. There'll be a brief ceremony at each of the cemeteries. At 11:00 AM, there will be a ceremony at Veterans Memorial located on Park and Frey St. Road. We welcome and encourage the public to attend that, to commemorate the loss of life of those who serve this nation. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward for citizen input or public appearance at this time? Is there anyone on via WebEx? All right, then we can go on to the next item, which is consent agenda. Board?
Motion to approve A through M.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve consent agenda items A through M. Is there any discussion on the motion to approve? No discussion? We'll do roll call vote, please.
Trustee Myers?
Aye.
Trustee Baum?
Aye.
Trustee Hudson?
Aye.
Trustee Kaminski?
Aye.
Trustee R. Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Jan Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Newreiter?
Aye.
President Walter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And then takes us to unfinished business. One item listed on tonight's agenda under unfinished business, we have village mask policy for village employees and guests of village facilities. To give us some more information and background on this, I will turn the meeting over to our Village Administrator, Steve Kreckel. Steve?
Thank you. Got a few slides here that I put together, and the reason this is on the agenda, in a meeting in May, at the first meeting in May, the Village Board took an action to implement a requirement for usage of masks by village employees and guests of village facilities to be revisited after 60 days. And this is the, I'm sorry, it was the beginning of April. This is, the 60-day period expires on June 4th, so this is the last opportunity to, for the Village Board to review that before the mask requirement expires. I thought I would provide a quick graphic here of, I've been tracking for a little over a year now, the number of new cases reported by the Ozaki Washington County Health Department, and you can see the trends here, the blue line for Washington County, the gold line for Germantown, and there was a peak in both areas this fall. The number of cases being reported each week has dropped significantly and has basically leveled out for the past couple of months at this point. The next slide, we did a, as on vaccination progress, we did a confidential survey of village employees. Seventy-two of the employees responded. Of that, about three-quarters have already been vaccinated, have had at least one dose of the vaccine. Nineteen, or about one-quarter, have not been vaccinated at all. A follow-up question we had for those who are not vaccinated was whether they intended to. Of the nineteen respondents who said they had not yet been vaccinated, eighteen indicated that they do not plan to get vaccinated. In addition to that, and as of the middle of last week, about 41% of Washington County residents had received at least one vaccine, and has, as has been pretty widely reported, there is a significant availability of vaccines for those who are interested in getting vaccinated. The last time this issue came up, the Village Board asked me for a recommendation. I'll say I put this together actually last Wednesday for the packet. There was a significant change on Thursday afternoon when the CDC indicated, changed their recommendations indicating that individuals who were fully vaccinated, according to the CDC, should no longer needed to wear masks, except in some very specific circumstances like flights or being on buses, but generally indoor or outdoor, the CDC was indicating that fully vaccinated individuals no longer needed to wear masks. The recommendation that I put together last Wednesday was that the Village Board allow the mask requirement to expire on June 4th, as is currently scheduled, and that the direction that I would give to village employees would be that if they are, if a customer in Village Hall or a different village facility asks them to wear masks, or if another employee, for whatever reason, asks them to wear a mask, that out of courtesy, that they should do that. And then, secondly, if we are operating in other facilities, whether it's a Germantown School District facility, which, and I know they've recently, they're allowing their mask requirement to expire at the end of the school year. If they're, if we're going into offices or stores or private businesses that require masks, as village employees, we should comply with those requests, but otherwise, the mask requirement could expire. I'll also know that, just as I've been following up with the news over the weekend, some other municipalities, and more so on the business side of things, have changed their mask policy based on the CDC recommendations, that they are not requiring the individuals who are fully vaccinated to wear masks, and are strongly recommending that individuals who are not vaccinated should continue to wear masks. So that's another potential possibility that's out there for the Village Board as far as setting policy going forward.
Steve, if you, if we want to head with this recommendation tonight, would there be any note, you know, what do you do on the doors of various buildings that the village owns? Do you do anything, or would you just not have anything at all?
Well, if the, if the Village Board, and actually, to allow it to expire on June 4th would not require any action, if the Village Board takes no action tonight, the mask requirement will expire on June 4th. If that happens, at that point, we would remove the signs, we have signs on the, on village facilities asking people to wear masks. We would remove those at that point when the mask requirement expires.
My only, my only concern goes a little bit with those that have compromised immune systems, and we don't know that, not all employees have to say that, or people coming in. Has that been talked about or addressed at all?
Yes, there still is, and that is part of the rationale for the point that if other employees ask that their, that their colleagues put a mask on, that I would ask employees to comply with that request. We did have a situation earlier this year, well, actually, we had a couple of employees who, for various reasons, are more at risk for COVID-19, and we asked them to put a sign up by their, one by their cubicle, another by their office, just asking people to make sure they had their masks on. And again, I think that, just as courtesy to their coworkers, that would be something that I would expect that employees would do, as well as if residents come in and ask, we do have Plexiglas up to provide a barrier, but if anyone would, in a meeting or another situation, ask that an employee wear a mask, that I would expect that we would all comply with that, and do that out of, you know, just courtesy and concern for our fellow people.
Trustee Miller. Jan Miller.
Steve, you said that there were seventy-two respondents. How many employees are there?
That'd be roughly about a 50% response rate. We've got about 140, 150 employees.
Trustee Kaminski.
Question, Steve. At what point do we then drop the, we're just dropping masks entirely? Because right now, the CDC is saying, if we've been vaccinated, we can't give anybody the disease. And so what difference would it make if I'm sitting next to somebody who has a poor immune system? That would be any different than it would have been three years ago? Because I don't want to get into this thing like, oh, you got to mask up, because now I don't want to catch a cold. You got to mask up because it's flu season. Yeah, at some point, we have to end this and return to sanity.
Is that a question?
Again, no. When would it end? Yeah.
Well, if the Village Board doesn't take any action, which is my recommendation, it would end on June 4th.
But even if people were, if a village employee says, please wear a mask, that's the part I'm looking at. Because that seems to be a continuation of this, if we allow this to expire on June 4th, which I would do.
Well, and I would say that that would, that would also legally then kind of fall into another category of an ADA request, that whether it's COVID-related, or whether it's any sort of immunocomp, uh, 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 compromise, you know, if it's, if there's any sort of immune system, a village employee would be able to make an ADA request that says, look, I have a compromised immune system, whether it's COVID, whether it's a flu, whether it's the common cold, they could ask for a reasonable accommodation. And I think in most cases, I would have trouble saying that asking somebody to put a mask on is not, is an unreasonable request. So I think that beyond that, if there are employees who would make that request, even if it's not COVID-related, we probably would, would have to comply with that.
Yeah, that's new territory for me, and I guess I don't want to even go there now, because it probably is not going to make any difference. But I would want, at some point, the village attorney to respond to that, because how many people are going to be carrying extra masks around? They're going to have to have a box in their office or something, obviously, for us to comply.
Yeah, I mean, at this point, I haven't heard any updated recommendations from those that are much smarter than I am when it comes to labor and employment-type related issues. Most of the folks that I talked to in that realm have continued to suggest, even into last week, that, you know, because of the OSHA Safe Place requirements, or the Wisconsin Safe Place requirements, the OSHA general duty requirements, that, you know, masks within organizations, you know, in particular, that kind of mirroring approach where, you know, if you see a mask, you should probably wear a mask, probably is, you know, kind of the bare minimum to kind of keep yourself safe from any potential, in particular, OSHA liability. The state did grant civil immunity to employers for COVID-related things as one of their most, more recent pieces of legislation. So that probably covers the Wisconsin claims, but it wouldn't necessarily cover the federal claims. I haven't heard anybody update that since the CDC kind of changed their guidance. I did check with OSHA's website, their guidance continues to be the same, and so, at least at this point, that would be my recommendation legally as well, is to just recognize that, you know, if you do see somebody that is, you know, showing those, you know, either, you know, requests or is wearing a mask that, you know, to match that. And yes, it's a pain and, you know, but at some point, I agree, I think it does end because it, you know, you're seeing it with CDC, with the CDC, OSHA, I assume, is going to follow suit at some point here as well, that, you know, the guidelines are changing as we learn more about it, as more people get vaccinated. And so I do anticipate that it'll change over the next couple of months, you know, at the long end, if not before that, so.
Thank you for that. I have one more question.
Yeah, you still have the floor.
I guess for me personally, I would just let this expire. I know our other choice would be to end it tonight, and I think that people do need this transitional period. I'm seeing, like, the occasional person in the grocery store, even though it's still posted, doesn't have their mask on. But I think people still need that little transitional period, and a lot of organizations are structuring it that way, at least where I work, they are. In your office, obviously, you don't need to wear a mask, but when you move about other people, you do yet, and that's going to all end at the end of the month. So for me, just to let it expire would be what I would prefer.
Any other questions? Mr. President. Trustee Rick Miller.
I don't know if I want to wait till June 4th. I'd like to expire it tonight. I, you know, I mean, the CDC came out with their guideline on Friday, and all of a sudden, signs started coming down everywhere. The WAC where I work out hasn't had a mask requirement in a month, more than a month. Restaurants, you don't go to a restaurant now when there's a mask anymore. I don't see the value of this. We're still going to have the Plexiglas up at the counters, I'm assuming. We can keep that up, and, you know, anybody that comes to the Village Hall, they'll be protected. That Plexiglas is plenty to protect them, so I'm going to make a motion on the floor that we expire this tonight on May 17th.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Mr. Knight Rider, did you have your hand up?
Yes, I did, and I have to agree here, I think if we were to let this thing expire, it's going to be a tough two weeks here, because some people are just going to not bring the mask and whatever. So if we're going to do it, I would agree, let's, I would vote for doing it as of tonight or tomorrow morning, whatever.
Further discussion? I would add that without, what we have as far as the number of people vaccinated and those that have been and are now fully immune, they don't require masks, for sure outdoors and in most situations, indoors. And those that haven't gotten a vaccine yet, that becomes their personal choice, I think, at this point, because there's plenty available, and it's just about anywhere where you're not waiting in lines. So those that aren't vaccinated, I think have made a choice to not be vaccinated, and those that are with a condition that makes them more susceptible to these types of viruses, well, then there's always that consideration of your fellow employee, that if they're in that situation, and that it is a spike, or there is that particular virus going around, you should accommodate their request. But I wouldn't request it of other employees on a regular basis. At this time, I would agree to release the mask mandate as of this board meeting.
That's a long deal.
Further discussion? Village Attorney.
So two points. Number one, just on that issue of kind of the assumption of the risk concept, you know, you could get vaccinated, there are vaccines available, you chose not to do it. Unfortunately, as it relates to occupational hazards, that's not the way it works. You know, you don't get to say, oh, well, anybody can look at the large machine with the very sharp blade and say, that's clearly dangerous, and so, you know, you don't have any responsibility. And so there is that concern, at least from a legal liability standpoint. The second kind of piece that I would add is, is just to clarify, for the purposes of the man sitting next to me who has to enforce these things, is when we say that we're going to terminate it tonight, is the intent that we're just not going to wear masks, period? Or is it to incorporate the kind of mirroring process that he's described, or what, just so that, you know, again, he's got some idea of what it is he's telling employees tomorrow?
Further discussion?
Well, I guess to that comment, it's going to expire on June 4th, so whatever was going to expire on June 4th would just be reverted to tonight, after tonight.
Based on if required by other facilities or organizations, or where a mask is requested by employees or residents? Is that what we're saying? Based on the motion?
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
What the understanding is based on the second?
Yes.
Trustee Hudson.
I'd like to point out that vaccines are not available for children.
That's true.
So should, should we, so should our park and rec people not wear masks with unvaccinated children? Is that what we're saying? Is, so, so when people bring their kids into City Hall, is this what we want to do?
I can just point out that many of our programs are held in school district facilities, and what we have done, and I guess according to this, what we would continue to do is be consistent with the policies that the school district has been setting. And in that case, their requirement for masks expires at the end of the school year. So we would, we would, for the rec program, follow the school district policies in that case.
Trustee Jan Miller, did you have your hand up?
Um, yes, I would just, I voted on the June 4th, and I would just say it's a couple of weeks. Why not let it ride and get a little bit more clarity for, you know, for these exceptions for the young children in the rec department? I think we need to be very careful.
Further discussion? No further discussion? We'll do a roll call vote, please.
Trustee R. Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Baum?
Aye.
Trustee Hudson?
Nay.
Trustee Kaminski?
Nay.
Trustee Jay Miller?
Nay.
Trustee Myers?
Nay.
Trustee Knight Rider?
Aye.
President Walter?
Aye.
For four.
Motion fails.
Fails.
It's not a majority.
Village Board? Another motion?
Mr. President?
Sir?
Could, and I want to put, since the concern seems to be with children somewhat, would it be fair, and I don't want to put Mark on the spot, but could we ask Mark his thoughts or what recommendations he would see, so that we could maybe add something to a motion here or create a motion?
Director Schrader?
Well, we're planning on discussing this at the Park and Recreation Commission on Wednesday night, and we were certainly monitoring and following what the school district was looking to do, and anticipating that we would be following those same thoughts, making masks optional for, for summer. I do think that we're going to get, no matter, we've all found out, no matter what we think, there's always the other side, and somebody thinks differently. And I think, right now, if I was, you know, put up here, I'd have to say that I would have our supervisors ask staff to bring a mask with them, even if we aren't going to, we're going to say to people it's optional for the summer, with this idea of mirroring what the families, what the kids are doing, I think we need to be prepared to do that. I did ask our recreation supervisors to contact other park and recreation departments in the area. We haven't met yet to see what some of those results are, but I thought, you know, that's typically what we do. We see what our neighbors are doing, we see what best practices are, and we go accordingly. But I would concur with Administrator Kreckel that we certainly, while we're not in school, in the schools as much in the summer as maybe we used to be, I think it's still a consistency type thing that we, the same families are, we're working with them and that are at, in the schools. So, did I answer the question, or did I just tap dance around it?
They danced around it lately.
That's what I'm wondering, is I'm.
Tune in on Thursday.
We got, sometimes you got to do that, but I.
Trustee Myers?
Nothing to mark. My question is, when does the school actually close this year? What date? Does anyone know?
June 10th is the final day of school in Germantown.
They have summer school until, starts after that.
I make a motion that on June 11th, that we apply the same motion that we just rejected, but change the date to June 11th.
11th? Pretty ends June 4th. You want to extend it beyond June 4th?
Right, because now this board system says, according to the policy, that the mask policy will end at the end of its new year. So that will apply throughout the summer. Whatever.
That's your motion, Trustee Myers?
It is.
Motion made. Do I have a second? What time? Motion made. Do I have a second? Motion fails for lack of a second. Trustee Hudson?
I don't think that the particular date is important, but I do believe that it is important to allow a transition period and a public education period to occur. I think that for people to walk into Village Hall tomorrow morning is, honestly, it's discourteous and it's not polite to change a policy that is this big overnight. I, I personally don't care if it's May 31st or June 4th, but I do think that there needs to be some education time.
I agree. I think get something up on the website, remind people that the mask requirement is expiring and this is how the recreation department's going to handle it after their Wednesday meeting, whatever you decide. I think, what's two weeks? Seriously? It just seems, just because the CDC said we can just stop now, I do agree. I think it'd be shocking to some people coming into Village Hall, maybe older people, maybe people with little kids. What's a two-week transition? It's like nothing.
I have a couple of responses to that, but the first thing that comes to mind is those that still feel they need to wear masks can do that. They can choose to do that. As far as an educational process, before, we always went to the CDC and our local health departments to look for their recommendation and we followed that recommendation. And now the CDC says you don't have to wear one if you're vaccinated, indoor or outdoor. And there's plenty of vaccine available. And I understand the village attorney's argument in a workplace, but it comes down to your choice. What is your choice? Are you going to take away that choice? People are going to learn when the mask sign isn't out there. Oh, they're not requiring anymore. But you know what? I'm still going to wear it. And I believe that there's still going to be people needing some time to remove them or get used to not wearing them because we've had them on our face for over a year, for God's sakes. And we feel unsafe by walking in any place because that's what we've been hearing forever. You know what? After the first couple of times, these things are coming off that quick because they, people have been waiting for that day. And finally, we hear it from the main governmental body that's been saying forever that you shouldn't, and now they've turned 180 and say, you can. And we're going to hold back a little bit longer for that reason, for a comfort level of those that can still choose to wear a mask if they want to or not. I say, stop it now. We've already taken that vote, so I'm looking for something else that we're going to be voting on or some other recommendation. Or we go with what is on the screen, which is on June 4th, and go from there as it's stated on those three points. But I'd like to move something on it. Village Attorney?
Certainly one option that may exist if there is some desire to maybe see it done before the 4th, but maybe some hesitation would be to give the administrator more authority to expire it. You know, say, for example, you know, OSHA comes down with revised guidance tomorrow that says, you know, after reviewing the CDC guidelines, here's what we say and we think that we can safely remove the mask requirement tomorrow, that we can do that. You know, that would be an option that you could, you know, give him the ability to, you know, flex that date, you know, depending on the guidance that we receive.
Is that a motion?
He can't make a motion. So we're taking the guidance from whom then? And he's looking at whom to make that decision from?
I mean, I think that the honest answer is that it would be all of the various, you know, the local health department, OSHA, you know, we'd obviously take into account what the CDC has said, you know, what we're hearing from Labor Council and what their recommendations are to, you know, kind of weigh all of that and make a decision as to, you know, is something sooner than the 4th appropriate based on what we're hearing?
Do you make that motion? So basically, what you're doing is you're saying that it could expire on the 4th, but you're putting it in Steve's hands to say that if more people come out for the removal of masks, then you can do it sooner?
Oh, wait, may I?
No, wait.
I wouldn't say that it's more people. I would say that it's based on the guidance that we receive from all of the various regulatory bodies as to whether it's appropriate or not in the administrator's discretion.
So you go to the CDC and then you go, where from there?
Well, CDC, OSHA, local health department, although there's nobody in the local health department right now. The line staff, but I don't think there's anybody at the top level right now because the number two, who was the number one, is now gone, I think. You know, so I mean, I think that you'd take into account all of those recommendations and make that determination.
Trustee Kaminsky?
Maybe a better argument, at least that would persuade me, would be to allow Steve to do this based on your employees and what they say, first of all, their comfort level, which is probably good, but I don't know that, and what's going to happen at the rec department meeting on Wednesday night and how they're going to handle schools and are they going to be following school system policies or whatever comes out of that meeting would be additional information that Steve would then have to make a decision maybe by Thursday as to the right approach.
And what does the park and rec decision to follow the school policy based on that second bullet point that was out there, what difference is that? Saying that wherever our employees are, they follow the guidelines of whatever facility they're in. That statement's right there.
But what if we're doing something in the old fire department, a class or something? It's got nothing to do with the schools. So what's our policy there?
Then it would be our policy.
That's what I'm saying. So is that what we want? Is that what the rec department would recommend? I don't know.
It's up to, that we're asking us. Trustee Knight Rider?
I'm hearing three, I think it'd be unfair to put that burden on to the administrator. I'm seeing, I'm seeing three things here. One is the timeframe. So in my mind, I'm thinking, okay, some of us are saying now, some of us are going with the June 4th. Could a compromise say we go to next Monday, the 24th? And I'm not putting this in a motion yet. I'm also seeing somewhat brought up of the age of young children coming in here and could we, could we put a sign on the door that said, we recommend children between the ages of, what, five and 11, five and 12, to consider wearing a mask? And then the park department is meeting on Wednesday night. If there's any steps they need to take, they'd have plenty of time to take that and report that back to the village administrator. But at least then, we would, we'd have somewhat of a compromise on the time, the age, and making sure that we're doing anything for the parks department.
Trustee Hudson?
I'd like to make a motion to end the mask mandate on May 31st with the ability to allow the park and rec department to formulate their own response, forward it to the village administrator for his blessing.
Motion made and seconded. Can you restate the motion one more, the second part of the motion?
I'll do my absolute best.
Okay.
With the ability to allow the park and rec department to set their own course of action when consulting the village administrator, but not, not to end before May 31st, obviously.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Trustee Rick Miller?
Just curious, what's the May 31st significance?
It's an even clean cut deadline.
And what happens if the school rescinds their mask mandate like Waukesha did?
We need to act on the best available science at the time. I believe that this is acting on the best available science at the time.
All right. Further discussion?
So is it truly that we're mainly concerned about what's happening with the children or those who oppose the first motion are just simply opposed to unmasking tonight? If it's just about the children, can us adults take our masks off tonight and let's keep the kids in masks until June 4th?
Is that a question for me?
It's a question in general for everybody.
So cases are on a downward trend. They are not where I would personally like to see them yet. I think it would be a mistake to remove the mask mandate tonight. However, if in seven days, the current trend continues, I think you're on far more solid footing. That's what the data tells me. You may disagree.
Doesn't some of the data also say that the ability to catch COVID from children is very minimal?
Yes, they are. They certainly are. Yeah, but the problem is, is the vaccines available to 12 and 16-year-olds is still relatively new. So that population, as of this time, is not significantly vaccinated. There's only one vaccine that's approved for that population.
But they also haven't been that significantly vulnerable or catching of COVID surpassed from one to the other.
So on the, so for the last probably three weeks, my family has received a daily email from the high school that there are at least three new cases every single day, every day. So I think that it is communicable and these kids are getting sick. And yes, they may not be dying and yes, they may not be on ventilators, but they are missing school because they're ill.
So in that respect, if we keep the kids with masks on until the 4th, let's leave it at that and keep the kids masked up and let the adults do what they want to do.
Have you seen the success rate of keeping a mask on a five-year-old child? It's very difficult. And then we also have the employees in our village hall who, why I think they are making the wrong decision, it is their decision to make, that they are not going to be vaccinated. And that's fine. So if they take their masks off and a 15-year-old comes into Village Hall, they can spread that disease to the 15-year-old.
If they have it.
Obviously, if they have it.
So how does that, how do we start drawing that line then when it becomes flu season? Because I think there's a lot more susceptibility and transference in flu and we haven't had any masks or shutdowns based on that.
That's correct.
It comes to your own personal cleanliness and keeping yourself as safe as you can within your own bounds.
The fatality rate of the flu on an annual basis is approximately one-tenth of what COVID is. Every year, approximately 40,000 to 50,000 Americans die because of the flu. In the last year, we have lost at least half a million Americans to COVID. To equate the flu to COVID is not a correct comparison.
Still transferred within the same means.
That's correct. That's correct.
Yet we have not taken the precautions based off of anything beyond a vaccine, given the choice to take the flu vaccine or not take the flu vaccine.
Yes, because...
If you're dealing with people that may be susceptible or may be taken ill and put into the hospital, like the elderly or those that are compromised within their breathing or have immune deficiency based on maybe rheumatoid arthritis medicines or those types of things.
You are 100% correct. Society has decided that 50,000 people dying of the flu every year is an acceptable price to pay, the same way that society has decided that 40,000 automobile deaths a year is an acceptable price to pay. I don't equate those two numbers with half a million or 600,000 official deaths of COVID. I see those as very different numbers.
Correct, but now the scale has changed based on the vaccine. Pre-vaccine, those numbers were apparent. Post-vaccine, you won't see those numbers. I think they'll be closely resemble what you see for flu because of the vaccine that's been out for a long period of time because of that. So to now put that and make apples to apples to it is not a fair comparison in my mind because you're dealing with a new entry of a new vaccine that came in that nobody knew anything about, that was quickly transferred and we had nothing to do to combat it besides trying different medicines and hospitalizations. Now we do. So now it's different.
Yep. So I don't necessarily disagree with you. The only thing that I'd like to point out is that the flu vaccine has been available for years and is available for all ages of society. We have not yet reached that with the COVID vaccine. We are on the verge of that. We will probably be there in eight to 12 months from now, but today, we're not there. So it is still possible for a 15-year-old kid who has a very mild case to walk into Village Hall and give a fatal case to one of our employees who is choosing not to get vaccinated. I would like to allow more time so more people can get vaccinated. The longer we wait, the safer it becomes for our society. That's just a fact.
I can't trade the cost. Okay. Further discussion? Thank you, Phil. No further discussion? Can we repeat the motion, please?
Motion by Trustee Hudson, second by Trustee Kaminsky, to end the mask mandate on May 31st with the ability to allow the park and recreation department to set course of action. And let's see, course of action with the village administrator, but not before May 31st.
And based on the ending at May 31st, is it based on the three points that Steve had in his presentation?
Yeah, and I think the other thing about May 31st, honestly, better than June 4th, is that it's a hard finite in time. June 4th is a pick-me number personally, but that's my own personal foible.
Further discussion? Roll call vote.
Trustee Hudson?
Aye.
Trustee Kaminsky?
Aye.
Trustee Jan Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Rick Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Myers?
Aye.
Trustee Baum?
Nay.
Trustee Knight Rider?
Nay.
President Walter?
Nay.
Motion passes. Five, three. Next item on the agenda is new business, starting with new business item A, Resolution 12-2021 Germantown Soccer Club Field Usage Agreement 2021 through 2023.
Motion to accept new business A, Resolution 12-2021.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. No discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? Motion carries. Next item under new business is trustee orientation.
If I can give a brief introduction while we're pulling some slides up, we thought it might be helpful to the trustees, especially the newer trustees, and we thought it might also be of interest to the residents to have kind of a brief background of village operations and in particular, kind of placing the faces and the names of our department heads with the functions that they're responsible for. So we have one slide basically for each department that we'll be putting up on screen and that's the department head to come up and give a quick overview. We're in the interest and out of respect to the trustees' time, I asked that we all be very brief. And obviously, there's opportunity for questions, but just so that you know, there are, I believe, about 15 or 18 individual slides. So if we spend 10 minutes on the first one with questions, again, not that there can't be any, but just to give an expectation of time. So we'll start out with Deanna Bronn Schweiger, our clerk and treasurer.
Hello. So on my slide, I included the department team. I have Paula Winter. She is the senior deputy treasurer. She started with the village in December of 2020. Crystal Bartz is the utility clerk. She started in January of 2021. Ben Hubrick, deputy clerk, deputy treasurer two, started in March of 20, excuse me, and Britton Smith, deputy clerk, deputy... And Britton Smith, Deputy Clerk, Deputy Treasurer 1, started in December of 2019. And Jennifer Rozak began with the village in October of 2020. And this group, I believe that they are not only the face of the village at times, at the counter, but they're also the watchdogs of the accounts payable and accounts receivable. So just keep that in mind if you're in the village hall. The department functions include tax collections, utility collections, functions of payroll, payables, receivables, debt payments, administration of elections, licensing, property insurance, legal postings and publications, special assessments and special assessment letters. And I have the five direct reports listed. And of course, with elections, this list becomes much larger. The departmental budget is a combination of finance and clerk budgets with allocation to other departmental budgets. This will probably change for 2022. In addition to increasing the clerk area, because there will be additional elections next year that we didn't have this year, there'll be a combination of the budgets there as well. So that was what I have. Is that except? I could go on. No, okay. Okay. Have more. Okay.
Slide 10.
Well, one of the things we're lucky, we have, I think, a lot, department heads are all very passionate about what they do, and they all could speak. I'm stoked about them.
I'm not going to speak at length. Michelle Tucker, I'm Support Services Manager. My functions include HR and communications. I, as most of you know, am leaving, but we will be filling the position, so you will see a new face in that role hopefully in the next couple of months. And then Matthew Useleding is our Budget Manager. He could not be here tonight because he is on the Port Washington School District. He's on their school board. Sorry, I couldn't speak there. And he had a meeting tonight because they're hiring a new superintendent, so he's getting some skills elsewhere that he can use for us later. But he is in charge of the budget and is coordinating the budget with all of the departments. He just put together a really great workforce report and is trying to dig in to see where we can find some money and save some money for the residents. Two things I want to point out really quick. Big projects coming. Website update will be next week. So everyone's going to see a new facelift next week. That should happen on Tuesday. And then the boardroom AV equipment is being upgraded next week as well. So this is the last meeting with bad technology. So residents will actually be able to see and hear at future meetings, no matter where they are. So it's very exciting.
Thank you.
Good evening. I think everybody pretty much knows me, but if you don't, I'm Scott Anderson with the Highways, Parks, Buildings and Grounds Department. Just a few notes here to kind of go over things generally. Our department employs 20 full-time employees. Throughout various times of the year, we have 10 seasonal employees as well. Members of our staff rotate and on-call schedule, which provides coverage for emergencies 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Our department receives, investigates, prioritizes, and completes requests that are made. Those requests come from residents, elected officials like yourself. And we assist nearly every other department within the village. We also interact with and assist community groups like MYFest, Fourth of July Taste of Germantown, Oktoberfest, National Out, just to name a few. Love us or hate us, our department is likely best known for performing winter maintenance on 300 lane miles of local roadway. We plow lots at eight village buildings and clear about 20 miles of public walkway throughout the village. We're responsible for the maintenance of the village storm infrastructure, both urban and rural, which includes rehabilitation of nearly 40 storm catch basins or manholes a year. We maintain 15 signalized intersections with the 16th on its way before the end of the season. We've got 21 areas of roadway lighting and parking lot lighting at six buildings. And then we have parkway and pathway lighting at five parks that are all maintained by our staff. We also maintain all of the roadway signage throughout the entire village. We maintain 37 building-type structures within the village, 16 of which all include the major construction principles, plumbing, electrical, and HVAC. As time allows, our staff completes that maintenance. We do the troubleshooting and repair in-house whenever possible. When necessary, our staff is supplemented by contracted services. These services are still managed within our department. Each year, we work with budget manager or building managers to budget for and perform building upgrades. Some recent upgrades that we've done over the last couple of years have been the renovation of the police annex, which is a little bit longer ago. LED lighting upgrades, which we're currently working on, but those have been going on through the village. And constructions of various office spaces and things like that through the village as well. We have 10 areas of parkland, nine of which require maintenance. That maintenance is performed by our department. During the mowing season, we mow over 200 acres of turf in parks around buildings and along roadways like Pilgrim Road, Mequon Road, and Appleton Avenue. In addition, we perform playground maintenance and splash pad maintenance and assist for certain recreational programming that goes on within the village. As a department, we are responsible for the maintenance of over 200 pieces of equipment. That maintenance is not just limited to DPW, but is village-wide. That maintenance is not limited to vehicles alone, but includes construction equipment, generators, and a host of small motorized tools. And finally, in 2021, our department will oversee 19 borrowed or non-borrowed capital projects or purchases. Some recent projects that we've overseen or that are currently going on are the library and village hall roof replacement, Mequon Road street lighting replacement, village hall and fire department, fire suppression mainland replacement, and the list goes on. In addition, our department oversees a number of contracts, including but not limited to the DOT assault contract, library HVAC, building cleaning contract, annual tree planting contract, and the Emerald Ashbore Treatment Contract, just to name a few. So that's a real brief. I could talk for hours with you guys if you want, but I don't think that's what we're looking for tonight. Any questions before I go? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Those of you that don't know me, I'm Tim Zimmerman, Waste Water Superintendent. The Waste Water Utility performs operations and maintenance for 110 miles of sewer pipes, ranging in size from 8-inch to 48-inch. We have 2,717 manhole structures, seven pumping stations, and one metering station. Our average daily flow is 3.5 million gallons. The utility is staffed by myself and four other full-time operators. My department participates in every snow event that is part of the highway department. One of my employees has a full-time route in Scott's department during the wintertime. And we also, if the snow event is heavy enough, we augment with other personnel using other specialized pieces of equipment for snow removal. My budget happens to be the largest individual budget in the village with revenues of just over, just under $7.4 million, and it's pretty evenly split. One-third residential, one-third commercial, and one-third industrial. So we've got a real good mix of revenue sources for the utility. Our expenditures this year are forecasted to be about $6.7 million. Our largest expenses annually are the MMSD capital charge of $2.8 million and the MMSD sewer user charges of $2 million. Our major capital item for 2021 is to finish the relining of the 48-inch interceptor sewer in the landfill area for a cost of about $2.5 million. Any questions on the Waste Water Utility? I also manage the solid waste recycling program for the village. What we do is we provide for the curbside collection of recyclables in your 90-gallon tote, as well as manage the operations of the recycling center. Our curbside collection is handled by waste management. The recycling center is staffed by two part-time employees, as well as full-time wastewater employees for material processing as needed, with general oversight and management performed by myself. The recycling budget is about $402,000 a year. The majority of the expense is curbside collection at $294,000. The balance is for the operation and maintenance of the recycling center itself. Our revenues are pretty negligible at the recycling center, with the exception that we apply for a grant from the state every year. We're usually successful with getting that grant, and it averages about $23,000 a year. Questions?
What's inside that building?
Which building?
The stone building, the old sewer building.
That's, it's kind of storage for materials for the sewer utility for manhole repair. And it's also a field office for my guys where they update their time sheets, they do reporting for, we have to temp all the piles at the recycling center for the DNR. We maintain those spreadsheets down there, as well as all of our O&M operations for the sewer utility on a daily basis.
And how do you, when you see trucks filling up at that station with the water, how do we track and bill for that?
We no longer are using that fill station for the public.
Even for big tankers?
It's app-
For tanker trucks?
You can ask those questions to Paul. That's kind of his baby there.
Well, I just remember they used to fill there.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Tim.
Good evening. My name is Paul Helgen, Water Utility Superintendent. So what we've got on the water utility side, we've got a total of, I call, eight staff. We've got six field, including myself, staff working on-call 24/7. We have one billing clerk and currently one GIS summer intern helping us out this year. Your utility consists of six wells, two of them filtration plants, and along with that, three water towers, two half-million and 1-million gallon storage facility. With that, 2020, we pumped, sold, flushed 790 million gallons of water. And through that was about 100-plus miles of water main and also about 50 miles of smaller service mains that we maintain. We also maintain and repair 6,000 system valves, plus another 6,000 small service valves in the system, including our meter system, which is about 6,000 as well. We also, on behalf of the utility, we do all the Digger's Hotline locates for the sewer utility, water, DPW, and parks, which is about 3,000 tickets a year. And then we also do assist DPW in winter snow plowing operations. Some highlights that you will be seeing is a new water tower up by the new Briggs facility. Steel should be getting hung here probably in the next couple of months with painting next year. And the well, well number 12 is going to be getting drilled here in the next few months with that project completing in about a couple of years. And that's a full filtration HMO system. Our budget is, our revenues are, we pull in about $2.4 million. And expenditures, we try to keep below that, obviously, but there's, as you know, some deferred maintenance. And one of the big projects we're trying to work through is a much-needed rate case to help fund a lot of our expenditures. So if there's any questions, I can take them now, or feel free to call or email me. And as always, would love to take you all on a tour of our plants anytime, and the lovely view from a water tower. That's always open to anybody who's interested.
Where do the water trucks fill up now?
We have mobile hydrant meters that whoever's interested, pull a deposit. And we pick hydrants at our leisure, and costs are associated with bulk water fees, hydrant connection fees.
So they're pulling it from random hydrants in, within the village?
Mm-hmm.
Is there any possibility of, when they pull that water out of there, of scoring those pipes where some people will get the rust for a day or two?
The volume of water out of a 2.5-inch, I don't think is that detrimental. There's gate valves that they have to open and close slowly. We've never had any problems with people drawing water at a high volume. We try to put them in areas where there is quite a bit of water turnover, so we don't have those problems. We know some of our problematic areas, so we stay away from those.
Okay. And then you had mentioned that you had six wells and two filtration plants?
Yes.
No, does that just for two of the wells, or does it filter the whole system?
So two of the wells, so your system is a combined, it mixes. So two are HMO, which filters for radium. And then it just actually fills up into our system and through the water towers as the other four wells run.
So then, as the system is all enclosed, it doesn't go back through those filters? It just comes out of the well?
It's out of the ground, through the filtration, out into distribution.
Any other questions? Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Good evening. Mine's probably the easiest. I'm Larry Tychek, Director Public Works and Acting Village Engineer. In the engineering department, we have two staff members. We're currently short three. We do, we are advertising for engineering tech and civil engineer position. Basically, what we oversee is, we have oversight for all infrastructure improvements, design and construction. We do all permits for work, any work in the right of way, our department would review. And then we manage the design, the bidding and construction of all specialty infrastructure projects, such as the road project, the well tower that Paul mentioned, the well, the water tower, that we handle all the administration, the contracts. As far as revenue, we really don't have a lot of revenue. Most of the revenue comes from permitting. And expenses really are just dealing with, I think most of it just comes from just maintenance of some software and things like that. So. Any questions?
Thank you, Larry.
I'm not sure if anyone else brought gifts, but I did.
Awesome. Very, very cool, limited edition channel. Very nice. Thank you. Wow. Steve, Paul, you could have brought us a bottle of water. Thank you.
So in a nutshell, I guess the most visible part of our department that the community be familiar with is the Patrol Division. So that is three shifts, six officers per shift, two lieutenants per shift. We have a minimum staffing requirement of three officers, one supervisor. We pretty typically operate at those minimum staffing levels. We can go as high as four officers and a supervisor, but that does not happen a lot. In addition to that, we have support services, which includes a detective bureau with a detective sergeant. That's two detectives, one sergeant, two SROs, and a crime prevention officer that also helps with investigations when they have some downtime. We have a 24/7 dispatch center with eight dispatchers assigned to that. We have two, one clerk typist, and we are hiring a property slash open records clerk to assist with those duties. Myself and Captain Grenier handle the administrative tasks. And just kind of a real brief overview of kind of what we do, the last annual report we had was 2019. So I'll share some of those numbers with you just very quickly. Took 23,000 calls for service. Just shy of 900 traffic crashes were investigated. We investigated almost 3,000 reported crimes. In 2019, the mandatory arrest, domestic violence arrests rose 67%, family offenses rose 32%. ACS, which is acute care service, calls increased by 24%. Our Chapter 51s increased by 14%. Suicides, we had 10 in 2019, which is up 43% from the previous year, definitely trending in the wrong direction on most of these mental health issues. Traffic enforcement, we issued just under 1,400 citations. Very aggressively seeking grants- grants, 2019, we did get a $48,000 grant for the body worn camera, which has been a very successful program for us. Last year, we, um, did get considerable grant money for, uh, COVID relief. So that's about all I have, uh, unless anyone has any questions for me.
I have a question, you, you mentioned that there's been an increase based on some mental health issues or concerns overall, is, that's what you're seeing arise in. I've read or heard that other communities are, are looking at creative ways in which to, to handle those with not so much as officer on site, but more people that are trained within, uh, mental health, uh, areas so that they can maybe help get that person down or bring them down in, in ways that they're trained in. Is that something that we're looking at, at a county or on a local level to see as these things increase?
Yeah, and Washington County is actually a little ahead of the, the game on that. We do have the acute care services is something that, when we are dispatched to something like this, we will call them, they will send a trained professional down to, um, and what they'll try to do when possible is what they call a safety plan, which is short of actually doing the chapter 51 and having to take them to the hospital and, and commit them for a period of 72 hours, um, so that is something that we're a little bit ahead of the game on. There's, there is talk about, um, putting together more of a team of individuals that would be responsible for doing that, but that's kind of in the, in the early stages. But the ACS has been, uh, a huge help for us over the last few years, but, um, they're, they're still, that, that's typically one person that's, you know, that's working after hours, so they're, they're for the entire county, so they're, they're spread pretty thin too.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is the, uh, fire department, and Chief Delane was not able to be here tonight, um, so I'm gonna try to fill in for him the best that I can. Just a brief overview of the responsibilities, obviously, the, uh, the most, uh, well-known are the, the fire and EMS responses, um, in addition to that, they do about 2,400 fire inspections every year, um, they are trained and capable as a hazmat response team, um, they complete, uh, plan review of, uh, new buildings, uh, when building permits and new development takes place, uh, that's a significant, uh, time and effort for them. Public education, uh, is, is still a major component of what they're doing. And then, I guess, pointing out that the Germantown Fire Department right now is staffed 24 hours a day, 365 days, um, a year, with, um, five full-time firefighters, uh, paramedics, um, and we are licensed as, uh, for paramedic service by the, the state of Wisconsin, and just wanted to point out that's the result of significant investment by the village board in the Germantown Fire Department and, uh, um, the ability to, uh, significant additional resources that have been put in, uh, over the last several years to, to be able to provide that type of service. And that allows the fire department to respond to, um, 2,200 calls per year, which has, has been growing rapidly, um, and, and continues to go up. The fire department budget is $2.6 million, although, uh, half a million dollars of that is, um, a payment to the water utility, uh, for fire protection services, um, which the village of Germantown, uh, puts on the property tax levy and, and budgets in the fire department to pay to the, the water utility. There's also, uh, $615,000 in annual, um, revenues, uh, related to EMS, when, um, when we respond to, uh, medical calls, um, we do bill, uh, for those and collect about $600,000 per year. The capital items for the fire department this year include, um, $200,000 for, uh, upgrades to cardiac monitors, and the second, uh, of two ambulance replacements, uh, will take place this year, uh, for $300,000. So that wraps it up for the fire department.
Any questions? No? Okay, Mark?
Hello there, not to be outdone by Police Chief Snow, but if any of you on your way out would like a participation trophy for, uh, your shelf, uh, we, we can help you out, we have a few extra. So, Parks and Recreation, uh, first of all, just to, uh, uh, talk about our team, um, we have a, a small but a very, uh, a veteran, uh, talented, dedicated, uh, staff that I want to mention first, we have two recreation supervisors, Patty Heinen and Katie Roger, who you obviously have probably seen at our programs and events, uh, do a fantastic job organizing the many, uh, I think in 2019, we had about 9,600 registrations for all of our programs, and they're also the face of our special events that we have, whether it's Easter egg hunt, movies in the park, family carnival, uh, variety of different things, so just wanted to mention that. Uh, Brianna McNeil, Shannon Lemke are our two administrative assistants in the office, they bring a wealth of experience, and certainly as the frontline staff, very, very important to what we do, uh, having, having their, their, uh, leadership out front. Uh, also want to mention Mary Feagle, our senior coordinator, and her staff, uh, she has two part-time, uh, ladies that help her at the senior center, Vicky Hoynacki and Susan, Susan Tatalovich, so want to mention that. A lot of backside, uh, you know, things that go into the Parks and Recreation, but really, we put down, um, you know, three main things that we're involved in, again, we oversee, uh, all the programs, all the special events, all the activities for the community, we also work with the Kewanians, we work with the, the soccer club, the baseball organizations, the football club, to help facilitate the delivery of their programs, uh, to the community. We also utilize volunteers tremendously, and, uh, and one other partnership we have is, is, uh, Patty is greatly involved with the Youth Futures Organization and working with the school district and other community partners to deliver those, those programs and, and, and activities to the community. The other side of, of the coin, I guess, is the, the, the park side of it, and we work closely with, with Scott and his staff, uh, they do a great job taking care of the parks that we have, we work together in the planning of projects for the parks, uh, whether it be, uh, contracted services for some of the projects we have, whether it be his guys and, and gals when they're, uh, you know, actually doing the maintenance so we can deliver a quality program. So we schedule those areas, we program those areas, and we work with, with public works to, to maintain those areas. Uh, I get involved, uh, with some of the projects, as you know, when I come forth here, whether it's playground replacement, whether it is resurfacing tennis courts, whether it's, uh, we've been fortunate the last couple of years, building, uh, a couple of park shelters. So some of those things, um, I get most involved with. Then there's also the, the more long-term planning, we're in the process right now of updating the comprehensive outdoor recreation plan with our Parks and Recreation Commission. Uh, we've gone through, um, some community engagement in the last, uh, year, year and a half, and, uh, we're at the point where I think we're, we're close to being, uh, ready to, uh, wrap that up, kind of in timing with the, the 2050 comprehensive plan. So, um, the one other major initiative I want to mention for this year is, if you've gone by Fireman's Park, you've seen the Fireman's Park Pavilion, that is, is, uh, nearly completed, and, uh, over the next three to four weeks, we should be wrapping that up and look forward to, excuse me, having that ready for many future years of, of enjoyment over there. From a budgetary standpoint, um, I, I just put a, a note in here about kind of a five-year average. 2020 was hard on our department, uh, as you can imagine, with things being shut down. Uh, I took a look, and between the five-year period, 2016 to 2020, we had revenues that averaged $950,325, with expenses of $1,204,563. I think, uh, and I've said it before, but an impressive thing, uh, for us is, we're able to generate roughly 80% of, uh, cost recovery on our operational expenses through our, through our revenues, and, um, those revenues are, are listed here, they come through the course of the program, fees, the rental fees, advertising, sponsorships, donations, and, uh, grants as well, so, um, I think that's, uh, something we're proud of. So, with that, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer. Yes?
Mr. Myers?
You want to talk about the senior center, please?
Sure, uh, thank you, thank you, yes, um, Mary Feagle and her staff, they are also involved with, we don't want to forget our seniors, but we have, um, we have an active program over there, uh, Mary's involved with, uh, you know, programs, special events, we have a van transportation program that, uh, provides a wonderful service to the community, and, uh, we found that over the last several years, we continue to get more and more interest in renting the facility for various functions, so, um, you know, I think that's a very vibrant place and will continue to be, so thank you for, for bringing that up, Dennis.
Mr. Rick Miller?
Just, uh, one question on the new festival out at Dinesville, are we getting any rentals this year on that yet?
We are getting some, yes we are, I don't have a number on what those are, we do have talked to some people relative to some weddings, um, so we are, uh, I think there's going to be many more to, to come, but yeah, we're starting to get, get some of that. I think one of the, the challenges that, that we kind of talked about and will probably face is the, the restroom, and there are restrooms that are in the Bell Museum, but, uh, probably not designed to handle, you know, larger events, so we're kind of trying to work through some of the logistics on that, so we make sure we serve the customer, but yet, um, you know, understand that, um, we have to maintain those areas, so, but we are getting, we are getting a lot more calls.
Further questions? Thank you, thank you, Mark.
The, uh, next we have, um, uh, building inspection services under community development, and, uh, Jeff Retzloff unfortunately is, uh, is, is not able to be here this evening either, so I'll be giving a brief overview. Building inspection services, uh, last fall, um, the, uh, village board approved, uh, contract, uh, so we, with, uh, Safe Belt for those services, so we moved from a, um, a, a staffed version, uh, when we had some key retirements there, uh, and, and contracted with Safe Belt, they have three staff who are here on more or less a full-time basis, uh, Katie Vokotovich, uh, Alan Schmuck, and Justin Brant, um, and they are responsible for, uh, administering our building regulations, uh, and building permits, as well as review and approval of plans, um, and any other inspections that are necessary. Uh, the, the, uh, transition from the in-house to the contract, I think is done, uh, has gone very well, it's also allowed us to implement a, uh, online, uh, permanent inspection tracking system called Community Core, uh, which helped a great deal during the COVID situation. The budget for building inspection services includes a, a expenditure authority of $421,000, the bulk of that is for the Safe Belt contract, um, and revenues are budgeted at, at a little over $600,000, and as of the end of April, we are ahead of budget on the, on the revenue side of things. So that, that is, uh, uh, that's Jeff Retzloff's building inspection services. And I'll kind of transition into then the other side of community development is planning and zoning, there are three village staff in that area, uh, Jeff, uh, Emily Zant, uh, our associate planner, and, and Lori Johnson, the planning and zoning assistant, um, they are, uh, they work on the, uh, village's comprehensive plan, which is a major, the update of that to go through 2050 is one of the major projects in this area, they're also responsible for administration enforcement of, um, zoning and property maintenance regulations, um, and coordinate the development review process, prepare staff reports and recommendations, both for the plan commission, and then the village board, as well as when it's required, uh, zoning appeals and economic development commission and, and historic preservation commission. Their budget is $287,000, with about $76,000, uh, coming in in revenue for, um, uh, zoning applications and, and various fees, uh, in, in that area, and I should note that of the 287,000, uh, significant amount of that, 35,000, is, uh, a, a contract for completion of the, the 2050 comprehensive plan. So which brings us last, but certainly not least, to, uh, the library.
... Summer, uh, there are circulation desks, our front, front checkout desk, and then a meat and animal services desk. You have open 59 hours of heat, which includes nights and also Saturday, so they, uh, open up 100 hours. Interesting year last year, um, but even with being closed for over two months, we have checked out... Free access for residents to water, digital materials, ebooks, art books, um, the most needed, movies, music. That are available, we had over 65,000 visitors for library on... But being able to offer many interesting parts. 23,000 government kits, and these were basically programmed in a way that residents could enjoy at home during the pandemic, that was a really great service that we were providing, and we did a lot of work in connection, connecting our activity kits and educational kits to resources that we have. We will be, um, transitioning into programming, we have a lot of... Fire, toilet surfaces, we added last week, we had a fire, sorry, we have poison, and that's in... About 30 to 35% of our budget is from Washington County, uh, that's based on our circulation of physical areas, we checked out to our, uh, Sarah President, um, Jack, her near the election, and also a small portion from, uh, library establishments in Basin County. The assistance to residents as well, um, and, uh, if you're, if you've seen...
My question I have is, you had mentioned that you're getting 30 to 35% of your revenues from Washington County, there has been discussions from the county in the past to, to either trim or eliminate that, uh, contribution, is that... Is that discussion still out there? And how would, how would that affect you?
So we did a study in 2019 there is a, there was talk of eliminating the counties are expected to pay at least 70% size of a certain provider to buy whatever number of services we're getting here. So when we looked at all of that information, the system we're needing now actually was actually was not yet because of state regulations alone that is required. So there wouldn't be, at least not in the future, there wouldn't be a situation where those
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? No? Thank you, Trish.
I could, just as a wrap-up, say thank you for your attention tonight, and especially to the newer trustees. If any of you do have any follow-ups or would like to see any of the facilities, you know, you've got really knowledgeable, helpful department heads and maybe more than willing to give you any more background you might like.
All right. Thank you, everybody, for your presentations. All right, next item under new business is Item C, Resolution 13-2021, Resolution petitioning the Office of the Commission of the Railroads for Alteration of the Wisconsin and Southern Railroad Public Rail Crossing on Freistat Road in the Village of Germantown, Washington County.
Motion to approve Resolution Number 13-2021.
Second.
Motion made on seconded discussion.
I didn't read it. Everybody just wants to get out of here. So very short, this is a result of, and I'm looking at Director Titek to make sure that I get this right, as part of the improvement to the Freistat and Maple Road intersection, where there were a bunch of accidents, the village restripped the Freistat Road through that area, which includes over the Wisconsin and Southern Railroad tracks, which are the ones that are at the very steep angle as it crosses Freistat Road. The, as a result of doing that, where the stop arms used to come down at the end of a, the two lanes that went across, because it's now the bike lane, the through lane, and then the left and right turn lane in the middle, that arm now comes down in the middle of that turn lane. And the railroad identified that as part of, as one of their regular investigations. And the Office of Commissioner of Railroads looked at it and determined that that probably does not meet safety standards. And so they have ordered the village to apply for a alteration of that crossing, meaning that they're going to change in some way the physical aspects of that crossing to make it safe. In light of the angle that the tracks come through, in light of the distance of the arm, we anticipate that the likely result of this is going to be the Office of Commissioner of Railroads ordering that a median be put in to basically prevent folks from using that turn lane in the middle over the railroad tracks. But staff, Larry and I, have been talking. He's going to talk with some of his other folks and see if we can come up with something maybe a little bit more clever and perhaps more cost-effective to propose to them. But that is the result that we foresee is likely, that median kind of approach. It's something that, you know, in light of the order, we don't have too much of a say because if we didn't do it, the office itself would do it, and then they'd just charge us everything, including the cost of the proceedings. So at least if we do it, we share those costs with the railroad, so.
Are we on Freistat and Maple or Freistat and River?
To the east.
Between them.
It's on Freistat, just to the west of River Lane.
Okay.
I do have a question, though. So that was, there was a twiddle there, and then they, you restripped it, right? Right now? And that's just a temporary until we get the ruling on this whole thing?
Yeah, if they ask for it first.
My understanding is that the twiddle, the turn lane in the middle, was done to address the safety concerns at the Maple intersection. In essence, we had two straight lanes where you could then go left or right, depending on which lane you were in. That changed to a single through lane with a dedicated left turn, which is being formalized in some way by DOT as part of a project this summer.
Correct. The intersection is rebuilt this summer.
Right, but right now, it just got restripped so that there is no left turn, right turn over the tracks anymore where there was. So that's what I'm saying. Is that just a temporary or is that the permanent solution?
The department gave us directives. Number one, what directive was is a temporary measure, cross-hatch the twiddle area, the left-right turn area, as a temporary measure. And the Department of Public Works, Scott, got his crew out there, and we met their deadline. The second, that was a temporary fix, and then they're looking for a final fix. You can't extend the gates. It's just a matter of that angle the railroad crosses that track is, I think they said, 22 degrees, very sharp. And so because of that angle, it creates an opening where people, they don't want to wait for the gates to go back up or the train to come through in the first place. So they're driving, there's a lane through the gates they can drive through, and the railroad wants us to eliminate that. In a lot of commonplaces, you're seeing now, you're seeing some raised islands, where you're seeing what they call delineator posts put in the middle. Those just don't tend to last very well when the plows come through. So we're not quite sure what we're going to do yet, but we're going to look for some cost-effective means of satisfying the requirement.
What's the estimated cost to us?
We don't have that yet. We have to determine what option we can apply there. I would, I would guess we're in the, just to shoot a number, $25,000, $40,000 minimum.
Okay.
If we have to put a concrete island in, you have to cut out the asphalt form of concrete poured in there and for the decent amount of space. It's going to be up to 100 feet each side, I'm guessing.
Mr. Myers?
Is there any grant money, Larry, for this?
Not that I'm aware of. This just came upon us. We weren't where this existed two months ago. It's just, this was just thrust upon us. They, one of their train inspection crews noticed this and brought it to the attention of the, what's the name, OCR, ORC? And then all of a sudden, the nasty gram started with directions. There was no conferences beforehand. We got a, we got a letter with directions. So we have to follow those directions or, I'm not sure what the consequences are. One of them might be they just do it, and they do it or fine us. I'm not quite sure. So we obliged and met the first deadline, and we're in the process of researching what our alternatives are to meet the request.
Basically speaking, this resolution will have them at least look at this or as a possibility of correction, correct?
Right. They've required us to petition for the formal alteration. As I say, we anticipate that they're coming into us, into this with the assumption that it's going to be a raised median. That's typically what they do in my discussions with the folks at the railroad and some other people that I know throughout the state. Kind of our job will be to see if we can come up with something perhaps more cost-effective that will satisfy them as part of the proceeding. So I think we go into it assuming that it's going to end up being the raised median, but, you know, we're certainly going to argue for something that is, you know, just as safe, but more cost-effective.
Thanks, Brian. The other thing was that when was this, when this was done, Graff was the one who did the design for this particular thing. And so I think the administration should go back to them, have them come up with some other ideas in regard to what you're talking about to present to the railroad commissioner in regard to this aspect. Because it was designed to do this.
Grave do it than us?
What was that, Mr. President?
Your recommendation is to have Grave engineer the, whatever the solution is internally?
I think the administration should go back to them and present this problem to them. The one that came up with it and didn't come up with it, they should have known better than that. Maybe they can help us along with this, not enter any contract, just enter into this as an idea, as to suggestions that we can offer to the railroad commissioner rather than doing it ourselves.
Well, going back through the history of it, because I wasn't here when all this happened, Grave performed the traffic study for the area. And I'm not quite sure, they were the ones that recommended what we actually did.
Yes, they did.
There were other recommendations, and the village decided to do the restriping of the road, from what I can tell from reading all the documentation that we have.
What I remember, what I remember was there's suggestion, and we went along with it. Why wouldn't we? We offered, we offered
There were, I think, three suggestions offered, and then we, the village made a choice to do the one we did. But since we have Grave on staff, one of the things, people that I want to go back to is Grave because they're traffic engineers, and they work in many municipalities, and see what they have seen or what they would recommend to do.
And that's all I'm asking for. I think we should look back to them. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? No further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Unopposed, motion carries. Takes care of all items on tonight's agenda. Before we adjourn, the next regular village board meeting will be on Monday, June 7th at 7:00 PM here at the village hall boardroom, and also can be accessed via WebEx. Thank you all for coming tonight. Thank you all for watching, and have a good night. We are adjourned.